Make sure you turn your mics on, everybody, please.
Albin Toner?
Thank you. And to the Republic which stands one nation in regard to equal liberty and justice for all.
Any adjustments to the agenda?
I have a few more items under Tom's end before they're left there.
Okay. Anything else?
No move to approve as amended.
Favor them. Look for him. Jack, you have some stuff for us? Public forum, are you here for that? Look for him, Jack. It's on. Can you hear me now? It's public forum, are you here for that?
You have anything else, anything to talk about, Jack?
Oh, okay. No kidding.
Don't worry, I'm halfway in your canoe.
And it's June 28.
Just a quick on the motion to authorize the town attorney to write a letter. Did I make that? I thought you made that.
I... No, I think it was, I think that is right. I think I made the motion to come out of executive session.
Okay.
And then Tom had made a suggestion that we make a separate motion for the action that was taken. I think I just, I couldn't remember and I think, I don't know if the video was up, I didn't check it.
I make a motion, we approve this, submit it. Second.
One favor. They approved. You have nothing under committee and board reports, so move on to town managers' reports.
Yes, we just wanted to talk a little bit about the... First and foremost, we're beginning to receive our credit, CMP, giving that credit up to both the fire station and the public works, and I'm glad that probably this month they had no electric bill.
Neither one?
Neither one.
Nice.
Right now, we see that new adjusted bill for the building here, and we're going to pay a whopping $16.31 for us being connected to CMP. They changed that status, that delivery service charge status to a secondary one, secondary one state, what they describe it as, and a single service charge paid, that's what the $16.31 is for. Moving forward, right presently, according to the CMP's statistics, once again generated this past month, which has been June to July, 9,120 kilowatts of power have been used, 1,760 kilowatts. So right now, in our bank, we have 33,200 kilowatt hours of banked power. So what we're planning on doing now, we've reached out to the CMP, and we're working out the statistics, is how we're going to percentageally move those kilowatt hours that we don't need to our, both our fire station and our public works on a continuous basis, so we reduce the bills as well. So I guess I can report that things are going quite well. The system is working, I think, a lot better than we had all anticipated it. And our usage here is phenomenal, I'm really surprised our lower taxes are particularly during the summer months, so... Be interested to see how it works out.
What's the $16 bill then?
That's service charge.
So we'll get that every month, it's just...
We'll get a $16. The only reason the other ones don't have a charge is that we have those credits, we had a $2400 credit, because they credited us back for all of here, and I just allocated it to those other departments at this time.
So the extra power, are you going to set it up that like a, whatever extra power that we have, 50% goes to here and 50% to there?
I figure we're going to be using probably 54% of the power that's generated. So the 46%, we can give between both public works and fire, and then legit, I've asked, we need to take a look at those bills, and then we'll come up with a percentage amount. Appears that that fire is going to use more than public works, and so we'll just make sure that we makes it up appropriately. That way, they'll see their savings in their budgets as a result of it.
Yeah, I mean, public works would probably use more in the winter time when they're...
They quite possibly could. I think it's a, I think it's a system that once we set it up, I think that we can move it when we see it's appropriate to move, so...
But I mean, in grand scheme of things, it really doesn't matter whether it comes down to that economy, as long as we're not paying, yeah.
It's a savings for the taxpayer, and I think that's the key here, is the savings.
So I had asked this a while back, is there a link that we can view? I know that Nioto had talked about, you know, being able to go online and look at it and see how it's, there a link that can be posted somewhere? Look at, or...
Yeah, and I'll talk to Nioto again about that, but SolarEdge has a link. And this is one thing that Jack keeps harping about, and something that we need to have a better conversation with CMP on. The SolarEdge system is producing the amount that's actually coming off of solar panels and reports that in their reporting. When we get to CMP, it seems like it's a little bit less, and I believe it's something to do with the interconnection we have with CMP. I think they, they take it onto the, onto the system, but when we draw off it, I think we're drawing 90% as opposed to 100% back to us. I'm not sure how that all works, so... But it appears that we're getting a better relationship with Central Main Power now that we've got this agreement going, and we have more, they're being more receptive to contacting us. And I, I have to say that it's probably because I reached out to our local representative, Wayne Perry. I was frustrated that I wasn't getting his comments, and I reached out to Wayne virtually less than 24 hours later. I had somebody on the phone talking to me, so I reached out to Wayne, thanking for his help in getting the ball rolling for us. You know, oftentimes I wonder why it takes that to get the ball rolling, and it's pretty basic, but it's a political part of this whole process.
Well, Nioto had shown me, you know, he had something on his cell phone, and, you know, he brought it up, and, you know, it's just biographs that showed what, you know, to me, we ought to put that link on our web page.
So, SolarEdge, you can go on the SolarEdge link, it's written on your rondo. If you click on rondo, and it will give up, it'll bring up everything that is being produced to your local link. But you're right, there's got to be a way that we can link that, so the taxpayer can look at it as well. I don't have anything to report, any extensive information to reference to the Old Town Hall at this juncture, so... As I do, as I will, I'll continue to gather on the agenda, and as these things come forward, I'll report to you on them. Moving on, I see one more, one more email on the swamp shop, nothing more than that at this point. This individual was more trying to figure out, you know, got to make sure you have volunteers set up, so we have the proper amount of oversight for it, because if we don't, it will go back to where it was. So I think he was more encouraging to the fact that we were looking at it, but no action taken yet. Ladies and gentlemen, come in, talking to the relative to recycling up there, recyclers, wanted to know more detail. I gave a contact to the seller, and they immediately got back to providing him with a brochure of what they do with recyclables throughout their whole company, and how they recycle them also, which I thought was very good on their part, so... That's moving forward. I got a, Phil may have be able to weigh in on this. I had a concern from a resident on Route 111, that the expansion of the 111 corridor in the, it has, has not slowed down traffic, it has sped traffic up tremendously.
Yeah.
And how, you know, jockeying for position and that kind of thing, and what can we do about it? Is there a way that we can slow that down? I, I sent that concern on to the York County Sheriff's Office, and their suggestion was to make sure that maybe your teams receive these complaints as well, in that, you know, their ability to maybe control traffic, maybe quickening traffic more than it's going to get down. And Bill drives that every day, so it turns big tracks traffic on the edge of the equipment, so...
Yeah, that is correct. Eastbound traffic hasn't changed hardly at all speed-wise, but westbound is really speeded up. And you're right, everybody wants to pass.
It's a race.
It's a race to get where it matters.
I drive it every day too, and somebody's always blowing by me as fast as they can to beat me to it.
And I mean, what's the DOT going to do about it? They're not going to do nothing, what can they do?
Put up a sign.
I'm not sure. I, since I reached out to the sheriff's office, I wanted to know if we had more frequency, and Jason may be over there, stir, but... We had more frequency of accidents as a result of speed? If anything like that was happening, so we can have some reportable information to share with DOT? And the York County Sheriff's, they indicated they had any major accident as a result of that, just a lot of jockeying there.
Not yet. We all have money that there's going to be a real bad one in front of Kate's butter at some point, because they're just, it's a drag strip, yeah.
They'll think DOT could reduce the speed, because on top of the hill, coming from Bitterford, it's 40. As soon as you cross the hill, it's 50. They could leave it at 40, down to beyond Kate's butter, that probably won't help, but the sun would be there. It would give the deputy sheriff something.
Do what he, that they do something about it.
Or we could ask the deputy sheriff to park there and monitor it, start issuing heat warnings. The deputy has been there a few times, and I've seen that, yeah, good. Not daily, but I've seen him there, he's parked at Kate's butter, and he parks, he parks down by all his gas stations in that area. I've seen him several times.
And everybody's the best driver in the world when they see the sheriff.
Unfortunately, I was sitting coming out of Bitterford one time, coming up over that hill, and a police officer was sitting at the top of the hill, and he said, he said, "I can't give you a warning, my supervisor told me you want to get a check." So I've done the same thing, unfortunately, and I gathered that whole thing, but...
That's a big speed trap, we're bitter right there.
So hopefully, maybe we can, you know, get something done there. But I like the suggestion on maybe reducing the speed, so maybe that's something that we could work on.
Keith, another thing too, I've seen a lot of communities now that underneath the speed limit sign, they mount, you know, sheriff's office have it on a trailer, and it shows your speed and it flashes, but it seems like, I don't know if we can purchase it as a community or if the police department has it, but they actually mount to the sign. And you wouldn't believe how many people slam on the brakes when they see that thing flash, you know, you're, you're going 45 or 50, or... I mean, it seems foolish, but maybe it's just something stupid as that.
I've seen them, I've seen them where they flash too fast, you know, that at best, and the speed is right there, and it's undefeated.
Right, right. Yeah, maybe we'll check on the DOT, see if they get something like that that they can put up.
The other thing is that I received a 4-year capital investment plan from the main terrifier authority, that's the project they have been running several, several years. There's a plethora of them, not ideally related to us, but expansion, resurfacing, that kind of thing, but... The planning and design things, it will be 2024, with construction to occur in 2025, Limerick Road underpass grid repair. So indicating here that, you know, they're going to spend close to half a million dollars preparing the superstructure repairs, the new construction payment. And then they indicate that traffic impacts and timing of other projects here will be viewed with municipal officials. So my assumption is that as this project is further down, they'll be contacting us for comments and suggestions on how that should be laid out.
You've heard nothing more from them on the exit for snow, for flowering?
I've not heard a word, but, you know, I haven't heard whether we express some concerns and that be, the concern that we expressed were accurate. Haven't heard anything back, they said they were going to look at their files and check their surveys and see who or what, because I think there was a discrepancy as to what they thought they hoped.
I mean, I don't have a concern with it, I think if they can make the turnpike safe, then that's great, but...
That's all I have right now under the town manager's report.
Okay, then, moving on.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, I got one more. Sorry. Just to give you a heads up, we're having, we're having real issues with obtained employees for public works. We're still, we're still in the challenge of trying to fill some full-time positions, but I focused a little bit more on my concerns as getting snowflow operators, so particularly for the winter months, to build the seats and the equipment that we present to have, be able to snowflow. So this week, we're going to be working on putting out an ad specifically for part-time snowflow operators. Thinking about, you know, the rate of pay, I'm also thinking about possible sign-on after two months, they get a bonus. And then if they get through two months, the next two months, if they stay with us, they get an additional amount of money if they stay at the end of the season. I think we have to start thinking that outside the box to try to get folks to work for us. The other thing is that we have an hourly rate change for those employees who have CBL endorsements on their licensing compared to those who don't. So we have equipment that somebody without a CBL could operate for us, and then our larger equipment that does our main roads, we need the CBL endorsements to operate that equipment. So if you know anybody, or any, anybody who wants to give up their winter at work, it's basically what you have to end up doing.
It's a tough sell.
It is, yeah. Because if you don't know, you know, I mean, obviously, we look at the weather, see that the weekend, there's going to be snow activity, but somebody who actually works for us on call will probably go away, but, but still, you have to have that commitment, you have that give and take among us to make sure that they're okay to be let, so...
Should we be looking at, Roger can't get any help, and I think your approach is going to, I agree, is going to be a hard sell. Should we be looking at contracting out some of the, half of the town, the upper half, upper end or lower end? As a guy in Dayton, and Roger knows him quite well, he thrives on plowing roads, and he does a pretty good job. He's got Dayton, Waterboro lineman right now, and he's open for more, and...
That's where all the employees are.
I've looked, I've looked at some of his roads during the storm, and he does a good job, and I think he's reasonable price. And I mentioned it to Roger a week or so ago, and he didn't take a shot at me. But maybe we could look at half the town, if Roger tells me right now, he's down at three, three people or four people?
Right now, we have the four people, four full-timers, including Roger and Terry in the night, so it's tight.
One of them is iffy right now.
Well, yeah, he's still hanging in there.
So that, you know, that they contract by the mile.
Yeah.
And then might be something to look at, if Roger don't have enough help.
I know it. Yeah, and Roger did say something to me about that, perhaps we'll talk about it a little bit more, but it'd be nice to secure something. As I told him, I said, you know, even if we had to supply the material, we have, we have the material in our, they could, we could load trucks here for them.
One of the towns that he does, that's exactly what they do. They, they supply the material, and although he trucks it in, and they pay him extra.
Yeah.
But they, one town, he does it all himself. I think Town Alignment, they supply the sand and saw and the sand shed.
Yeah.
And, and he, he loads himself.
Right.
Goes that way.
That may be something that, you know, we would have to do as well. I do know that when I talked to Roger, he has a unique system that this gentleman you're talking about has set up. He guarantees them a paycheck for the first 400 hours of labor.
Yeah.
Whether they, whether they're moving snow and all, that way they're committed and they're getting a paycheck.
You know, you get 400 hours, if it don't snow all winter, you're getting paid for 400 hours.
Right.
And if it snows more than 400, he pays the extra.
Correct.
So that, that's a, that's a really decent incentive.
See, that's part of why you get people to get into the seat, you know, they guarantee a check, so...
But, yeah, we think that it's something that we're interested in, I, I would think that we'd want to move on that, probably relatively quick, wouldn't we?
Yeah, yeah, we...
It's time to move on, it's all removal bad.
Right, that's what I said to Roger again today, I said, you know, middle of July, first of August, we have to have this secured up. Figure out what direction we're going to go, it's hard to imagine it that way, but come the middle, come the end of October, we're going to have snow. That was the other thing, so I'll keep you posted as where we are. A concern of mine, that, you know, we, we've got some great equipment, but we may not have people to go in that equipment, which is troubling. Maybe I can get some of the fire department to do the smaller equipment, add it around, what do you think of that?
Yeah, I'll do it if I'm not up north. It's like it every weekend. Keep in mind, there's only snow on weekends of all of it.
Yeah, well, that's, I'm done.
Yeah.
That's all I had.
Okay, and moving on to business, acoustic panels, which are surrounding us here.
Yeah, they came, they came in today, I took them out of the box and threw them out there, so you can take a look at them. We have fiberglass in the back, and they have the cloth in the front, and... I got a whole box full of that stuff, so I think they're, they're designed that you can, you can lay them, you can put them either or, and then put the clips into them, but the clips get mounted to the wall, and then they get put on to the clips, so...
Anybody have any idea how high you're supposed to have these, or...
Well, I think that's something that we're going to have to decide upon, is where we want to put them.
I mean, even with them here, we still have...
Right.
An echo right there.
Yeah, they're not up yet, I think once they're on the walls, that may help a little bit, but they're still...
Jason, when they work on the wall, they're this way, do you think?
I don't think, it's a square footage thing, so I don't think it'd, you know, I don't think it really matters.
But do you have any, any of you have any suggestions of how you'd like to see them laid out? Or are you guys going to leave that up to Jason?
I told you I'd hang them on a rainy day, so...
Yeah.
You tell me where you want them, or what... Is it going to rain them up?
I don't think it's going to be that hard, but...
Layout would be the hardest part.
Right, those who lay it out and then put them up, and then just make sure they're level, obviously, but other than that...
How high are they going to go?
I think they ought to be at least at the, at the window height, you think?
Like the bottom, or...
Yeah, the bottom of the window going out, all the way across.
And put them lengthwise?
Yeah, doesn't, doesn't get a headful, want to go up.
Yeah, it's just bouncing.
The shorter ones under the windows? Can you put the...
That makes a difference a lot.
Yeah, I, I think I would do the walls first, and then if we need any more, we can go up there.
It looks like when they're ceiling mounted, they, they actually have a different...
They're, they're different, I've got, let me pull the one I have in the, in the drawer here, and we'll look at it. And then it's sort of screwed in, as opposed to being on a wall.
Could you put the shorter ones, say, put two, I don't know how many, I don't know, we have two or three under, under each window?
Yeah. If we went even, like Phil said, if we went even with the top of the window with the long ones.
Yeah, I got four of these, bro.
So we could use those here, maybe?
Yeah, you can run those there, it looks like...
Yeah, I think, I think we should put something up.
Yeah, so that's just going into sheet rock, so we don't weigh anything.
Right, it's hardly any...
How many do you have, four?
We got four.
Yeah, we could put those right up here.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, so, anyways.
It's getting more expanded as it's...
It's just going the whole way. The little ones, one over each door, except the exits.
Yeah, we could...
I'm going to spread that out, a more than short, would it not?
You got eight of those two by two.
Yeah.
Yeah, one, the little ones, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. You put them up over the doors, there's two up over that, one up over that door, two under that window, two under that window, and one, two, three down there, that would take care of the eight smaller ones. If you put them right up over the...
Way up?
Yeah. All the panels that are there now, some painted panels that are there now, if we try that, and there isn't enough, we could go on both ends.
That's what I, that's what I would suggest. I wouldn't go there yet, I would put these panels up along, maybe even below the...
Below that line?
Yeah. Like in between the windows there, and then along the...
Yeah.
The wall all the way around, and see if that helps. And then maybe, we're suggesting on the small two-by-twos, to go above the doors or between the doors, and see if that helps. And then maybe, um, we're suggesting on the small two-by-twos to go above the doors or between the doors and see if that helps.
Between the doors and under the windows.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe.
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 Actually, Jason, between the doors would be one, two, and you could put three under each window, give you the eight.
And then what's behind us? Anything? What's going?
Well, I think you've got to have, you've got to put some panels there. That's why I put these three here.
Great.
The center and then maybe center again or something.
Yeah. Yeah, and if you wanted, you could do the three large ones in the center, maybe put some of the two-by-twos over the top of the door, uh, the.
TV.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The TVs. That may be a way to go. I think we're up for any kind of suggestions that work. You want to leave it up to Jason and I. I'm sure we can figure it out. We just don't want any criticism of it. It's not working properly.
There's going to be somebody to blame, you understand?
No, you don't. You know, it's a different point.
Jason, how is Emily at doing things like that?
No, she's not.
You know, to me, I think we should reach out to somebody and ask the question of, are these acoustic panels better higher or are they better lower? Right? I mean, I mean, I think that might just be an easy question that, you know, Luke or somebody that you've contacted before. Well, and, you know, what are your thoughts? Better up above? Better down low?
Let me look at my folder, because I think in the folder, they provided a plan. They, they, because they wanted to put a chair rail in. And then, um, after the decorative chair rail, then put the panels up. And they had come up with a plan on the back wall as well. So let me pull that out. We can take a look at that, see how far our panels that we have. I don't know if we have enough for what they proposed, but at least we stand on that one.
Yeah, I would tend to think that you want it at voice level, right? You know, just high, you know, because that your voice project, yeah, it bounces off, but if. But I have no idea.
Does the manufacturer have any customer service department you can call and say, hey, what's, should there be four feet off the ground, six feet off the ground?
They, they, they did, but I'm sure that we can take a look at that, see what else may be available there. Somebody suggested what we could do. They only gave you what the acoustical panel is good for, how wide of a space. Right. Yeah. So we're a little bit below what, what I think they initially, the size of room, obviously. Uh, I think they would have asked for more panels than we have here, but thought it was a good way to start. And hopefully we accomplish what we need.
And we want to try to plan it so when these are all up, if it isn't enough, we got room to fit.
We know where we're going.
Correct.
With, with another bat.
Well, I think what, I think what you say, Phil, is right. I think we have to go up on the bonus pitch there.
Yeah.
And put something there. Um, and then at that point, it would require more panels, but also probably a rental of a sewer rip to get in here to allow somebody to go up and down, Jason, up and down.
I got a, I got like a, I think I got a twelve-foot step ladder. I think I even have a fourteen-foot step ladder.
Oh, really?
I think I could reach anything in here that you would want to do.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I got a ladder. We could take that panel off if we had to, so I don't think we need to rent them.
Okay. All right. All right, so I guess we'll just move ahead. Next time, hopefully the next meeting come in, if we got a rainy day, which went there.
Yeah, and I know they were here today. I would have shot over this afternoon and.
I wonder what would happen if we put four panels, two up here and two up there, just for the heck of it.
Not sure.
Because those panels look like, are they about the size of those, those things right there? Either there or put those panels this way. So you've got that white thing there and then you'd have two panels that way on either side of it.
What's the height of that too? Twenty-two feet?
That's just, that's just aesthetic.
All twenty.
Yes, right up tight.
Right up tight against that joint. There's a little step right there.
Horizontal or?
Yeah.
Let's dig the plan out, Keith, and see.
Okay.
I'll dig it out.
Yep.
Let you know what's, uh, we'll go from there.
Okay. Vote participation in public proceedings. We got the suggestion by MMA on policy. Needs to be either wholesale adapted or modified to meet our needs, assuming we want to do this.
I sort of, I used the MMA model and they had, um, it seemed to catch all of.
Tracks of statute. I mean, yeah.
Yeah, we grabbed all of the requirements of the statute. The only thing I did is I wanted to refer it to a board of selectmen in the plane because of the frequency of us meeting. I thought maybe the, the budget board, we, we never wanted to extend it, probably could, but, um, I thought it meant the flavor of what we needed to initially get done. Um, I thought that the, the wording was fine as far as I was concerned. It's pretty clear. The statute seemed clear to me as to what we could do. Um, the process for, for approval is a public hearing and, um, you know, posting in a public hearing before any action is created. So my, my thoughts are unless I get a strong objection, we'd do to, um, post for a public hearing through the next meeting, share it with the townspeople, and then you guys make a decision how you want to proceed with that one.
I, I would say that we, we add the budget board to this now. That way we don't have to deal with it. You know, we don't ever use it for the budget board. We don't, but at least it's, it's just there. It's not that big of a deal to add, right?
Yeah.
Even, even the ZBA, I mean, I know they don't meet often enough, but we might as well. Dan says, might as well cover everybody who at any point in time need that, I, I hear him.
Yeah.
So I'm sure we're a public meeting.
Yeah, see, yeah, I, I can do that.
And just, yeah, just go.
Add those, add that language to it. We cover all of our general meeting groups that need.
Yep.
Now, this is in as timely a manner as possible under the circumstances. So if a member of the planning board contacts them at four o'clock in the afternoon and says, I'm not going to be able to get to the meeting tonight, and that means unless I can attend via Zoom, then how are you going to advise the public?
Well, what you would have to do is that you would have to get notice out to the public, possibly the website, posting, whatever, posting. Yeah. Um, and then, um, whatever, whatever materials that we distribute to the public on a general basis would also have to be distributed to, to them. But right now, what we distribute to the public is the agenda. Um, the only other material that we do post is that when I, when it goes on the website, it has your packet on there too. So the, the folks that are at, at home, we see what you receive for, within your packet. Uh, but if they come to the meeting, it would be just a check. So in your case, I think that we could say, hey, if somebody's not going to make it, we need a post that's going to be soon. We'd have to make that posting available on the website so people can see it.
But you get two hours to do it before the meeting.
Right, yeah.
But I think the chair, the presiding officer's got to make a decision. If you come in late like that, you need to say sorry.
You can't make the meeting.
Right, that, that very well could be what.
Right, I mean.
And like for the planning board, all that stuff, there's, and they're still going to continue to put all the submissions online, so that all that stuff is there anyways.
Correct.
So, yeah.
So, you know, and, and then to Jason's, uh, topic at, at the last meeting about public hearings being held. We could do that. This doesn't stop me from doing that at all. Um, in fact, you can just put them out there. If you have a public hearing, folks, you notice them properly and they can participate because no votes are taken as a result of their participation.
Yeah, I would tend to think that for public hearing, I would tend to think that we, we give it a try. All public hearings, we make, you know, we make, promote accessible. See how it works.
Right.
You know, you start getting nobody, like some of them that I noticed on the planning board, they were getting more participation. But doesn't hurt to put it in.
I appreciate you supporting me on that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's a fact.
All right, so if I don't hear you, you know, yeah, I think it's pretty cool. It's hot.
Yeah.
Um, I'll just put the, the budget board, the ZBA, lots of the policy, and have it available for you for the next meeting.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Okay, we have two warrants.
We actually have three. There are two accounts payable and one payroll.
A motion to approve them all. Was that three signatures or just two?
Three. There's three.
I didn't find the other one.
Yeah, it's right on top of one of the, yeah.
Yeah.
Somewhere, somewhere, there's a.
One didn't have a.
One didn't have a blue binder.
One didn't have a blue binder. One of these accounts payable. I think the one that.
Look under the other blue binder. Right there. There you go.
Right there, yep.
So I make a motion that we sign the two accounts payable and the payroll warrant.
A second.
All in favor? Done.
I think Keith said that was the final, that small one, that's the final warrant for, uh, last fiscal year.
Hope so.
We hope so, yeah.
Yes, I'll send you that information by email tomorrow. We have it.
Hey, Dan, is there any other business?
I do.
I thought so.
Yeah.
Um, I do have a couple items, Keith. Uh, I noticed when I was walking around today, I noticed a handful of dead trees, dead landscaping trees. That stuff getting, you're taking care of.
It's supposed to be taken care of, yeah.
And have we gotten anything more with landscaping?
No.
Okay. And then the only other thing is the casella issue that was brought up at the last meeting. Has that been making care of?
Um, the information was sent to the officials and they said that they were there.
Anything else?
Wondering if, if, uh, them two young ladies that Roger uses are flagging and stuff, two or three. He says they are awesome, working young girls. He says they, they work their mungza. Maybe they could do some of the landscape work when Roger's not using them and, and Roger could continue them all.
Yeah.
If no reason, no company seemed interested in doing it.
Sure.
I thought I had one guy that would jump right on it. I've talked to him twice and he was supposed to come and see you. And I don't know if he has or hasn't.
I had wondered if it's where King saw me. He indicated to me that he sent me a estimate. Um, and I haven't received it.
That.
Yeah.
But at your last suggestion, you, you all said that I should probably just put it back out to bid for the whole, the whole thing. And I'll do that.
That might, I don't know, a little bit more interest, you know, because not a lot of people want to win and do half a job. And let somebody else do the other half.
Yep.
The girls, that's a good idea, although I'm sure Roger's probably using them to the, to their fullest potential.
I want to have the pace.
Anything else, folks?
Motion adjourned, seven forty-three.
Second. All in favor? You're out.